What was the program, Mr. Smith? Apple?
A program that's run through Augustana College that's called the Penguin Project.
Penguin Project, right.
It's a national thing and a lot of our students saw the Penguin Project and said, why don't we do anything for our students? If that's what our mission statement says, that's what our duty is to do too. And so, so we did this.
Yeah, so it was, it was, it was wonderful. And I believe the person who started the Penguin Project was there as well, wasn't he? At least a local center person?
Jeff Cousins administers that program at Augustana College and he was there.
He'd come as well.
And our students also participate in the Penguin Project.
So thank you again for all the, the effort that you and your team put together for that. Thanks. All right, now going on to you, Mr. Zimmer.
Okay, well, this past weekend, the Iowa Music Association State Large Group Festival was conducted. And an instrumental band, our wind symphony and wind ensemble, both received Division One Superior ratings. The symphonic band and concert band received Division Two excellent ratings. And the wind symphony received one hundred and nineteen out of a total of one hundred and twenty possible points. And this was set a new band record. Congratulations to them. And the orchestra, the full orchestra and string orchestra both received Division One Superior ratings. And then vocal music, Division One Superior ratings for treble choir, treble concert choir, chamber choir, bass choir, and treble chamber choir, with a number of them also having included several perfect scores. And then Division Two excellent ratings for concert choir. So that was on the music side. And at this point.
Who did the junior high musical from us last weekend too?
I'll do it. I would like to congratulate the junior high musical participants. But we've had such great theater. I mean, the week before we had the spotlighters. This is another junior high production of James and the Giant Peach. It was incredible. The kids are so talented. So thank you to the cast, of course, and the team that helped make that happen. We have so many talented kids in our district.
Thank you. Okay.
You got it.
So at this time, we've got some special guests. Houston, Texas. Junior High, Grant. Glad to be here. The junior high members and team.
So, as the team's getting up here, just go ahead and line up. Don't be afraid. So I'll give you a brief introduction and then I'll ask a couple of kids to talk and then y'all can ask them as many questions as you want. FIRST stands for For the Inspiration and Recognition of Science and Technology. It was an organization founded by Dean Kamen, the inventor of the probably most popularly known as the Segway scooter inventor. He formed that in the nineteen nineties. And he addressed the kids at the closing ceremony and said his goal was to create the, the World Series, World Cup, Super Bowl of STEM. And he said people laughed at him. This year, to give an idea of the magnitude of the accomplishments, not only of the junior high students, but the high school as well, is that there were over fifty thousand people in attendance watching these kids do what they do with robots in STEM. Mr. Kamen said people aren't laughing anymore. But it is about more than robots. First Lego League encourages the kids not only to design a robot out of Legos and, and do a robot game every year, but also to do a research project that engages the community on an annual themed challenge. Feel free to ask the kids about that. Now, in terms of the magnitude for Pleasant Valley, I don't have the exact numbers on FRC. I'm sure Mr. Franzenberg or Mr. Hausman will have those. But for First Lego League, there were over two hundred teams in the state. This team won the state championship, lovely Lego trophy here, which qualified them to participate at the world competition. There are over thirty thousand teams worldwide in First Lego League. And this team was one of one hundred and eight that participated in this festival. Now, they don't release final rankings for First Lego League teams, but after looking at their scores, I'm confident that this team placed in the top one hundred worldwide. And have a fairly decent confidence that they were probably in the top seventy five worldwide. From a Pleasant Valley standpoint, there were eight teams across the state of Iowa that represented state of Iowa first, from FLL to FRC and FTC. Of the eight teams, two of them are in front of you today. Twenty-five percent of the representation of the state is standing in this room. That's a phenomenal accomplishment for Pleasant Valley. And of the eight, a third one is a community team in the Quad Cities that has a number of students from Pleasant Valley Junior High and Pleasant Valley High School. So the robotics program here is strong. I'm very excited. I think Mr. Franzenberg and Mr. Hausman are very excited as well. But with that introduction, I'm going to turn it over to a couple of our first year students, Derek and Lucy, to give you some prepared remarks and then you can ask questions of them after that.
I think FIRST has been like a super incredible experience for me and just getting to go to the world competition was super cool. We got to meet a ton of new people from all around the world, which was really exciting. And we all had a shared passion already, which was also just made it easy to talk to them and meet them. I also got to go to Texas for the first time, which was cool because I got to try all the food and just look around, which was interesting. I really enjoyed learning about the robot and all the coding and the problem solving that went behind that. And also our innovation project, which is back there and all the physics and math behind that. And it's actually made me interested in physics in as a class in high school that I want to take in the future. But besides just robotics, it's also kind of developed me as a person. Because at the start of the season, I remember I wanted to work on everything. I wanted to have a say in everything that we did. Because I'd never really been in robotics before. This is my first year. And I just wanted to do everything. I didn't really realize that we had to split up and do that. But over the course of the season, I learned to, you know, trust all my peers and I met them more and I knew them more. And it made me more effective as a team member. Overall, it was just really cool.
Hi, I'm in seventh grade and this is my first time doing any type of robotics at all. And it really grew some interest for me. This year, FLL meant a lot to me and made me think about many things that I would have never thought about, like a spring powered battery and all of the different energy sources that we researched. Also, it meant a lot to meet so many new people and do things I've never done before, like traveling to an international competition or things I've done very little of, like coding. It was such an amazing and fun experience at Worlds. I met so many new people from all over the world and got to see a bunch of different energy sources that were very intelligent and cool. But one of the best parts was hanging out with my team and experiencing it all, from meetings to qualifiers to state to Worlds. Some things that I want kids and adults to learn about FLL is that it isn't only about the robot, like Mr. Band said. It's about finding new interests, new ideas and new friends. You might think that the robot is the most important thing. It definitely is important. However, researching, making the scripts, hanging out with your team and designing the project and model are all very important too.
So that's all we've got. So if you, all we have prepared. So if you guys want to ask questions or talk to students, feel free.
Did the board have any questions?
Can each of you tell us what your role on the team was? Like I know some of you are drivers and that kind of stuff.
Introduce yourselves to your name and what grade you're in to be great. Thank you.
And if your parents are here, introduce them.
So my name is Jesse. I'm in eighth grade. This is my dad. So this is my fourth year in robots. And the thing I did on the team was I did a lot of the math physics with spreadsheets and I worked with Derek and Grant over there. And we just kind of did that a lot. That's mainly what I did.
Hi, I'm Lucy. I'm in the seventh grade. This is my first year in FLL. And that's my mom over there. And my role was the robot and I was the driver on one of the sides.
My name is James and I'm in seventh grade. And I have done FLL for two years. And those, that's my mom and then that's my grandma.
My name is Lily. I'm in eighth grade. This is my third year doing FLL. That's my mom. That's my grandma. And my dad is one of the other coaches. I helped, we were able to like transition and do a bunch of everything really we did. We got to do some research. We got to do some building and we got to do some coding. And I mostly worked with Lucy with the coding of the robot.
I'm Derek. I'm in eighth grade and this is my first year in robotics. My mom and dad are second row from the back. And I mainly worked, like Jesse said, on the innovation project, which had a lot to do with physics and how springs are applied in energy.
Hi, I'm Veronica. Parents are back there. And so, one quick thing is I want to say thank you for recognizing James and the Giant Peach. I am a theater kid in that. And so I helped on the script a lot, whether it was grammar editing or just lines and stuff. This is my second year in any type of robotics. And it's just really fun. And I mainly worked on the scripts, innovation project, stuff like that.
Hi, my name is Isaac and this is my first year in robotics. I'm in seventh grade and my mom is in the second row in back. And I mostly worked on the innovation project and the triples, but I also worked on the robot a little bit and making the attachment.
I'm Grant DeVore. I don't have any family members here. I'm in eighth grade and I've been doing robotics for three years. Typically, I was also working with math stuff, physics, all that stuff you need to make the model, stuff like that.
Questions from the board?
So I had a child in robotics, so I have tons of questions, but I'll keep it, I'll limit it to two, to two. What was your team name?
Interdimensional Business Pigeons.
Gotcha. And can you tell me about your project?
All right, so back here, I'm not sure. Yeah. We built this spring battery, which took a very long time to come up with the idea and build. So we kind of did the research and stuff about this and we made sure everything worked sound. And we just figured out how all the math works and then we built it. So, yeah.
So easy.
It took a lot of research, operate with what, seven months, eight months? Yeah, and most of that time was working with the team, figuring out what we wanted to do, what we wanted to start with, where we, like everything about this. We all did, and we all started from eight months ago as a team to help make this.
Basically what it does, which you forgot to mention, but that's important. And so there are a bunch of springs in each of those colored modules and with a motor it winds them up. So when we release the tension in the motor, then the springs will then wind it backwards and push the energy back through. So we could, we would use this to like level out energy spikes and like renewable energy sources like wind and solar that don't, that aren't always active. And they could also be a kind of replacement to like.
With the Amion?
Yeah, with the Amion batteries because they can be dangerous to the environment and dan- and dangerous in to people too because of fires.
And you forgot to mention how much you enjoyed winding up those springs.
I should mention too, and I told the kids a couple of times throughout the year, in order to create this, do the math behind it, they were approaching concepts that usually you hit about sophomore year in college in an engineering curriculum. And we have seventh and eighth graders that were approaching those topics this year. So that's, that's pretty amazing to see them dig into that with the enthusiasm that they did.
You know, Mr. Brand, I just want to say thank you to you for coaching this team and all the time that you get dedicated to the kids, which is awesome. You know, and thanks for being a part of this. But you know, what I want to say is it's, hopefully you had a great experience, number one. But Derek, you mentioned about maybe going to physics classes at the high school. What's so cool is we always tell younger kids, make sure you envision what's going to happen in your future. What's kind of cool is to be able to go to Texas with high school students. And I hope all of you envision yourselves wanting to be in that program when you get to high school too. So keep this passion burning and use these high school students as role models for you. And what they accomplished this year is pretty cool too. So thanks to all of you.
Congratulations. Well, as I do want to recognize that there were, Lily mentioned it, but I do have a co-coach, Jeremy Lane, who was out of town on business this weekend, wasn't able to join us. But his, his contributions are very important to the team's success as well.
Well, congratulations again. And hopefully you guys will go again next year, those who are going to continue on this program as well. I happened to go last year to Houston and I was there. And it's an, it's an amazing conference, conference with so many people. It's very overwhelming at times, but it's, it's just great to see all the students there and that passion that everybody displays for, for robotics. So congratulations again. Thanks.
Set her down right there, guys. Well, thank you all for having us. My name is Jason Fransenberg. I'm one of the coaches here at Pleasant Valley. And we prepared a short presentation for you all.
I'm Mr. Hausman. Together, me and Mr. Fransenberg, Fransenberg coach our three robotics teams. And we've been able to offer our FTC program teams for about ten years. And this year, we're happy to, this is our rookie season at the FRC level.
Before we talk about FRC, we'd like to acknowledge two FTC teams. One of them, Everything That's Radical, went to the state championship, through the championship, winning the gold division undefeated. Went into the grand championship before, to the team that went to Worlds. So we almost had three teams go to Worlds. They were very excited. And they were also instrumental in starting this team. They started summer camp last year in fundraising to give this an effort as well. So we want to acknowledge the FTC presidents. In addition, we'd like to thank the Dean Haas Foundation, NASA, the Argosy Foundation. There's several sponsors.
Pleasant Valley Community School.
Obviously Pleasant Valley Community School. And many others for helping to start the team.
I'd like to start off by telling you a little bit about our history. We started about a year ago after COVID and we had three people in one room and one FTC team. Since then, in the past two years or so, we have grown our whole robotics program in the high school to three teams, two FTC and one FRC, as you can see there.
So we've competed in three competitions this year. We won the Rookie All-Star Award, which is one of those, I'm not sure which one, at the, I can't see the other side, at the Midwest Regional in Chicago. We also won Rookie Inspiration at the Iowa Regional in Cedar Falls. And also won the Rookie Inspiration at the Worlds Championship in Houston, Texas, finishing in the top five percent of all of the rookie teams in, which was pretty cool. As a rookie team though, you can imagine that we faced our fair share of challenges throughout this year, which we definitely have. There's no doubt about that. And one of our biggest challenges was electrical issues for sure. At the Chicago competition, I would say that every possible wire on that robot came out of any, any part that it could have, to be honest with you. And we've had, the chain, I think, broke three times on Saturday afternoon during that weekend. But we managed to overcome those challenges and we had ended with a very successful weekend, so.
For programming, we have two programmers, but one of them couldn't be here today. Over the season, we learned pair programming and also a new language just to program the robot. We ended up making a reliable and successful autonomous program.
So we worked with one of our mentors from John Deere to develop a very well and working maintenance process so that before and after every match, we would always make sure the robot was running fine. And we also used our school's mail shops to be able to design many different additions to the robot, such as our claw in the middle.
When I was first asked to join robotics, I was a little hesitant at first. Robotics kids to me have always been weird nerds that I never interacted with. And me coming from an athletic background made me hesitant on joining. However, after joining the team and enduring the hardships and team bonding that has occurred, I realize now that we're not so different. We are just alike. We're a family. I hope to inspire more kids to see robotics in the same light that I do.
With bigger robots came bigger budgets. To maintain our spreadsheets, we had two major fundraising activities. These activities also correlated with our outreach projects, which in terms of reaching out to the community. Our first one was our summer camp. We had a summer camp in the high school during the summer where we had about thirty students come in from the junior high and learn the basics of FTC. And we made our own game and had them try out different robots, code. And like it's a whole mini season summed down into a week. We did two of those. And then we also teamed up with Avenue of the Flags to put down flags on major American holidays.
Traditionally, this past summer, our team partnered with the Quad Cities Cruisers Car Club for their end of the year car show, where we made in-house custom manufacturer awards and brought our FTC where we made in-house custom manufacturer awards and brought our F, uh, FTC robot field to the event to let members of the community see STEM in action and additionally look on driver.
And we have five professional mentors and are looking to get a few more to help next years that, uh, help us with wiring, programming, and also a little bit of the business and media side of our team.
Looking at the future, we have three main goals. First is sustainability. We want to be sustainable monetarily and through student interest. We want to reach out to different, um, companies around our area to get their sponsorships while also, um, increasing our fundraising efforts and our outreach efforts. We also want to develop more student interest in our high school, junior highs and, um, elementaries, so that we can develop a transition system, succession program, so that FLO kids will go into FTC in junior high and freshman and sophomore year and then from there, they'll go into our FRC team in their junior and senior year. This way they're, um, going through each level of FER and also developing onto their skills.
Um, to continue to help, um, see every Pleasant Valley robotics team succeed in the future, we also, um, aim to upgrade our equipment and tools through different grants and fundraising, as mentioned before. Um, we appreciate you guys listening to us tonight. We do have a quick demo prepared for you guys, but first, are there any questions that you guys have?
From the board, any questions?
Can we do the same thing where they?
Yeah, can you guys all introduce yourself and let us know what grade you're in and then if your parents are here, introduce them as well?
Hello, I'm Ryan, I'm a junior and my mom is, uh, over there.
Have you had a particular job?
Oh, and I did.
My name is Gabriel Anderson, my mother is over there and I worked on main mechanical and I also managed the robot batteries.
Uh, my name is Will and I mainly just did programming on this robot.
My name is Jonathan, my parents aren't here and I worked on building and 3D modeling some of the parts.
My name's Carter, my parents are back there and I did a lot of, like, designing for brackets and stuff like that on the robot.
Uh, I'm Mark, I was one of the drivers and I did a bit of the wiring, a little bit of the mechanical.
Uh, I'm Campbell, uh, my mom is across the street at home. And I oversaw and also did some mechanical things.
Uh, I'm Ainsley, I'm a junior and I mainly, mainly did, uh, mechanical and technical things.
Uh, I'm a Thorv, I'm a senior and I spearhead outreach and finance.
My name is Fransburgh.
Mr. Hausman?
I'm Dylan, I'm a junior, my parents aren't here and I welded and I built some of the stuff on there.
So how many of you had, have been down to Houston before this year? Was it, or how many people went to Houston for the first time this year? So this is the first time this team had gone over there, is that correct? Awesome. And what was your favorite part of being down there?
Like down there or at the competition? So, uh, my,
Probably pretty good.
My favorite part at the competition was meeting new people, uh, because we're in Iowa, we don't get to meet a lot of whole new people from around the world. Uh, but there, I talked to people from Canada, Mexico, Brazil, a lot of people from Europe. Um, and it was a great experience, it was definitely eye-opening. I've never had the opportunity to talk to so many people from so many different walks of life and it really just builds me as a person, I believe. Um, it makes me realize that, um, there are things that I could change about myself because they do it better somewhere else and I should be like them, so. And I also can tell that I had an effect on them, they took some things away from me that they could do better and that we could do better as well.
I think they like the pool. They swam every night.
How did, um, each of you decide on which role you were gonna play and how does that all happen? And so that nobody, right, not everyone's doing the same job, right, that's not gonna work?
Um, I would say kind of at the start of the year, it was definitely a rocky start to begin with, to figure out where everyone had a role to play. Um, but as the season continued, um, there's so much to do, like, to get ready for competition and, and Houston especially. Um, so everyone ended up finding a role kind of where they fit in and it took some testing for sure. Maybe you would start doing one thing and you'd be like, you know, this is not the best fit for me, maybe I'm, I'm a better use somewhere else. So everyone kind of just tried some things out and where they decided that they fit the best and they were the most useful is kind of where they stayed for the rest of the season and everyone ended up finding a role on the team to do something this season, so.
We're, we're trying to run it like a business, I apologize for chiming in, but they have a travel board and we're trying to have different departments. Still trying to sell them, like, to use that project management board, um.
Yeah, and people definitely weren't constrained to a certain position, so people kind of bounced all over. It, at the beginning, when we didn't bounce all over, um, as much, people in their specific field would get stuck and they didn't have any outside help. Uh, but when we kind of bounced around and if I helped with electrical, if I went helped with coding, or I didn't know much about coding, but I kind of, you know, pitched some ideas, that definitely made a difference and we all kind of found our groove with that. Uh, later on, of course, not towards the beginning when it would have helped more, but we did figure it out and for the next years to come, now that we've all had our bonding experiences, I think it's gonna go that much smoother.
Yeah, I would like to add on to that, um, being in outreach and finance, you would think that I'm like behind spreadsheets most of the time, but you would usually find me in the wood shop. I remember painting those bumpers wrong. So, yeah, upside down or learning how to cut wood with friends. So you, you would not expect those things out of someone who says he's in outreach and finance, but we're everywhere.
I appreciate you mentioning that because when we designed that facility and the addition, it was very strategic that the robotics lab was connected by a door directly to the metal shop. And that was deliberate because one way or another, we wanted you to get into that field and actually see what all is involved and how do you make some of those parts. I appreciated a couple of you explaining, yeah, we went back into the metal shop and for the first time I got to use a CNC plasma cutter. I guess I would ask, how many of you, had you not been involved with robotics, would have ever stepped foot in that metal shop? I'm just curious, how many would have ever done that had it not been for that piece of equipment?
He's a Walder, so he's about.
I got that, I got the fabricator, but the rest of you, from finance to whatever, would be like, no, that, I don't, I don't find a place in there, I don't know why it would be in there. But now all of a sudden you see it's just an extension and there are tools to make your, to fruition. I think that was pretty awesome, just describing, yeah, we went in and used this and we made that.
Did you want us to describe some of the different ones on there? Um, so there's a lot of different pieces on here that were custom made from us. Uh, for example, uh, these chain guards here are meant to be breakable so we can interchange them every,
And they have broken.
They have broken many times. Uh, we used a 3D software called Fusion 360, um, to design these chain guards. Um, as well as, like you said, with the plasma cutter, we had different, um, brackets and things, like our custom ninety-eight-two that I can't like that because it's free on.
Yeah.
Uh, right there was custom made with our plasma cutter. Uh, we also CNC drilled out some, uh, different pieces on the side so we could get access to our wiring easier. Um, and it was, it was definitely a challenge. It's easier than it sounds, you have to, um, coordinate where holes and things are gonna be on your robot into 3D space on a computer. It's definitely a challenge and we've learned a lot, especially.
We have a custom battery mount on the back, which you can't see because we can't turn it around because it breaks on, but, um, custom battery mount on the back. We have, um, more custom chain guards on the side. Um, those used to be plastic, but we learned quickly that plastic breaks and shatters. Fairly, fairly easily. Um, so that, that was changed quickly after that happened. Um, but besides that, yeah, that's about it.
I've, I've always been a, a metals guy, but this was my first year learning, uh, how to weld with aluminum and bend aluminum. It's a lot different than steel, it's a lot harder, uh, so I would have never worked with aluminum hadn't have been for robotics and Mr. Hausman over here teaching me, attempting to teach me.
So you do a little demonstration?
Demonstration, yeah.
Yeah.
You wanna bring your laptop a little bit closer in case it just drives off?
Yeah.
Whoever is driving, do not open it up.
It's really fast, so. We don't want to rip up the carpet either, so we'll go pretty slow. Makes me nervous that we're gonna destroy something.
Uh, so that's our team name, so.
Oh, got it, okay.
Yeah, brainstorming for a long time to get that name and then, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna mention this, it really proves how much of a rookie team we are. It wasn't originally supposed to be No Limit, it's supposed to be No Limits with an S on the end, um, however, that, that, that didn't correspond when we made the logo and printed out the T-shirts, so. We're, we're No Limit for this year, but next year I think we might change it to No Limits. Yeah.
Yeah, I, I, I made the mistake, it was a typo.
Yeah. Yeah.
And that's another thing, I, I was always that metal guy too and I learned, I designed the T-shirts for the team and that was my first time ever using, like, a T-shirt software or designing anything kind of cool like this. So, that was definitely a new learning experience. Um, as well to go along with our logo, all of our logos and team names are supposed to be math-themed.
Yep.
So this is supposed to be a limit sign, these little squiggles. Most people didn't understand that, but.
So. So it's basically like a limit and since there's no value for it.
Our, our other two are deviation from the norm and then everything that's radical, so we had to make something which is math-themed. So this is, um, every day for us.
Do you want a power cycle?
You can take a power.
Here, do you just want?
Uh, I think you guys got a power cycle. Communication lights are red.
Strategic programmer response. I know.
This was all part of the plan, by the way.
It shows your teamwork.
It does.
Agree.
For every match, like.
So I think it's worked in the past. Robotics is predominantly male. And so I've been happy to see on each team there has been a girl representation, so do you find that in your classes still? That you have, you know, a girl here or there, or is it?
Uh, yeah, I still find that to be the case.
Yeah.
Especially like within our welding classes and our manufacturing classes.
Hopefully tell you.
Usually only have like two to three.
Hard to know how to.
Hey, there we go.
We're not available to come tonight then, so.
So the major premise of the game was you take the cube and you have three levels and you gotta put the cube on three levels.
Yep.
And it's basically a massive tic-tac-toe, so if you have three cubes or three cones, I mean, three cubes or cones, uh, in a row, that's a link. And the more links you have, the more points you have. So not only are you trying to get a lot of elements on the wheel, but you also have to strategize on how to get those elements.
Do you want to turn around and show the cube watch now?
You guys want to say it all, you remember it, it just feels like yesterday when I saw you guys loading this up and to go to Chicago. So a lot of things have changed since you went to Chicago and the success you've had, but, uh, again, just thank you for what you've done and you've kind of put Pleasant Valley on the map. I remember when, uh, Mr. Fransburgh and Mr. Hausman said a few years ago that they wanted to have this in our district, we're like, oh boy, how much does it cost? And in all honesty, you guys have raised the money, the kids have done the work, which has just been amazing, so well done and thank you for your business side of it too. And work and problem solving, so well done and look forward to what next year can bring to it. Grant and, uh, just thank you. This is just a cool program for our kids and I don't know if people understand the amount of time that you give to this program. There's not a night where you're not there late with the kids or on a Saturday late with the kids, it is hours and hours, so, thank you to you and what you do for our kids every day, it's huge.
Thank you for having us.
Good job, guys, ladies.
Hey, don't give me the trophies.
Anything else, Mr. Zimmer? Am I getting this in?
Yeah.
Rudolph Heights PT, do you guys want to say anything at all?
They're left.
They're left, okay. Thank you.
Okay. Um, moving on, uh, we, I will take a, a motion for the consent agenda.
Will the board approve the consent agenda as presented?
Motion by Mr. Camer, second by Ms. Conklin, approve this evening's consent agenda as presented, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Approval of bills, general funds.
I move that general fund warrants be issued in the total amount of four hundred eighty-eight thousand, four hundred thirty-six dollars and seventy-seven cents in payment of invoices presented.
Motion by Ms. Hoskins, second by Mr. Ayers, that the general fund warrants be issued in the payment of invoices presented, are there any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, nutrition fund.
I move the nutrition fund warrants be issued in the total amount of a hundred and one thousand, two hundred and three dollars and seventy-nine cents in payment of invoices presented. Second.
Motion by Ms. Conklin, second by Ms. Rivera, that the nutrition fund warrants be issued in the payment of invoices presented, are there any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Elementary, junior high activity fund.
Elementary, junior high activity fund warrants be issued in the total amount of eight thousand, six hundred fifty-six dollars and eighty-nine cents in, in, in invoices presented.
Second. Motion by Mr. Camer, second by Mr. Ayers, that the elementary, junior high activity fund warrants be issued in the total, or be issued in the payment of invoices presented. Are there any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? High school activity fund.
I move that the high school activity fund warrants be issued in the total amount of sixty-seven thousand, two hundred and thirty dollars and sixty-five cents in payment of invoices presented.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Ayers, second by Ms. Hoskins, that the high school activity fund warrants be issued in the payment of invoices presented, are there any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Capital projects fund.
I'd like the capital projects fund warrants be issued in the total amount of seven hundred eighty-five thousand, nine hundred and nineteen dollars, fifty-five cents in payment of invoices presented.
Second. Motion by Ms. Conklin, second by Mr. Camer, that the capital projects fund warrants be issued in the payment of invoices presented, are there any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Purple fund.
I move that the fund warrants be issued in the total amount of eleven thousand, two hundred and sixty-three dollars and forty-four cents in payment of invoices presented.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Ayers, second by Ms. Rivera, that the purple fund warrants be issued in the payment of invoices presented, are there any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Student construction fund.
I move that student construction fund warrants be issued in the total amount of three hundred and sixty dollars and seventy-five cents in payment of invoices presented.
Second. Motion by Ms. Hoskins, second by Mr. Ayers, that the student construction fund warrants be issued in the payment of invoices presented, are there any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Internal service fund.
I move that internal service fund warrant sixty-five oh-two to sixty-five oh-six be issued in the total amount of five hundred and seventeen thousand, five hundred and fifteen dollars and sixty-eight cents in payment of invoices presented.
Second. Motion by Mr. Camer, second by Mr. Ayers, that the internal service fund warrants sixty-five zero-two to sixty-five zero-six be issued in the payment of invoices presented, are there any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? And trust fund.
The trust fund warrants be issued in the total amount of seven thousand, six hundred and seventy-four dollars and seventy-six cents in payment of invoice.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Ayers, second by Ms. Hoskins, that the trust fund warrants be issued in the payment of invoices presented, are there any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Welcome, Ms. Brock.
Thank you.
Um, moving on. Um, moving on to old business. Uh, update on the Pleasant Valley Junior High and Forest Grove building expansions. Uh, Mr. Struce, Mr. Zank, Thomas here, Tom Holland, and Kyle Sandage. Uh, so, do you wanna start with this, Mr. Struce?
You know, just before spring break, actually right after spring break, we broke ground on the junior high and the Forest Grove missions that are going on. If you drive out there right now, you can see things that are happening. And so we just wanted to give you an update tonight. Uh, so Thomas here from F R K in Leland. Um, then they kinda give you any questions you have about the project today, you'll be able to ask them tonight as well, so. At this time, I'll turn over the two of them.
Sure. Thank you, um, yeah, i- if you've been passed, you'll see that uh, building pad work is going on and some walls are going up. Uh, Leland and I and, and uh, Superintendent Struce, we will have a meeting tomorrow for the project, so. Um, can we reconvene back here tomorrow night and we'll give you a better update, uh, than Z V, but. So far, the work is going well with, with not too many. Leland, I know you've been out there quite a bit.
Yeah, I mean, if you look, if you look at the junior high, the, you're gonna notice, front of the junior high has been changing. Like all the, front of the junior high is starting to come off. So they can attach the new building to it. Uh, they're getting ready, they're on the cafeteria side, the footings and stuff are in for the cafeteria expansion. They're starting to get all the plumbing and stuff done at the junior high. They'll be doing the footings for the junior high here shortly. If you go to the Forest Grove project, footings are in, are in on both sides, they're actually laying block on both sides. So there's a lot going on. Uh, it's going as scheduled, so that's the good news. The bigger question is if you had any questions for us.
Questions from the board? Have you had any hiccups so far? Any, 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 anything unexpected?
No.
So no change orders then?
No change orders, there's been a couple of small change orders, but nothing unexpected. Yeah, they've just been very minimal.
Are we getting all the supplies, you think your time, where timeline will be?
That's part of the big discussions tomorrow. The generator and the chiller are about a year out, so we're trying to figure out exact timeframes. Does that affect our work for the summer? Do we have to put it off till next summer, now it's, I think it's too congested to get done in the summer when the school's back out. So that's really what the, the whole meeting tomorrow is about.
So with the Forest Grove expansion, remember when we opened it up and we were having some issues with the um, heating or air conditioning? And um, now we're expanding this. So how does those issues that we were having when we first opened the school and continue to have, with not very good service from the company and trying to fix it? How is that gonna play into now this renovation that we're having? And has that problem been fixed now, or are we still dealing with that issue in the midst of this expansion?
We're still dealing with just a little bit of it, but there is probably, they've made great strides in the last two, three months. So we're about, at probably about the ninety-five percent of the issues are gone, but we still have that last five percent that we're trying to resolve. Uh, it's the same company that is still tied in with Forest Grove, cause they did the original. And that, so they do our whole facility. So they're, they're in every building. But they've, they've come to the table, they keep on coming back and make, they're making promises and slowly getting things resolved.
Okay.
I don't know, and as part of the project, we actually have an outside firm come in, go through and verify that all the work they did is complete and was done properly. And if not, they, they put a list together for us.
So if I remember correctly, there was a certain amount of money that we held back because of the issue.
Two hundred thousand dollars.
And we have not paid that yet?
Correct, we still have not paid it.
Because until five percent becomes zero percent, and it becomes zero percent for a certain amount of months, we should not be paying them any of that money.
Correct.
We were very frustrated, we were not getting good response from them, do they know the issues we were having and that they were not being responsive, and that's poor customer service, all those sorts of things? The board should remember that in the future, cause it's, you know, I, I've heard from some parents regarding these issues, and so. We wanna make sure that we're, they're gonna continue to have service with us and continue to put new things in our systems. We expect a certain caliber, a certain level of service with that.
And the contractor who's not on site any longer with us and not a part of this project has been very good about emailing and checking in, so. You know, he's not with the project, he's done a very good job.
Yeah, they just don't walk away from us, they've.
That's good to know.
Yeah.
The questions I have.
Can you have a robot, you can?
Wonderful, there's no required motion on that, we'll see you guys in just a little bit on one of our other topics here. Um, so now we're gonna go into new business, service learning update. Uh, Ms. Myatt.
Hello, I am Christina Myatt, I am the service learning coordinator at the high school. Um, as you remember, last year we made some sweeping changes to the program to really make each unit an actual learning unit and not just I hand in hours and get them done. So that there is a preparation, a execution, and a reflection for each project. One of the most wonderful parts of that has been with our se- our juniors and seniors. As we've moved towards a project-based uh, service learning unit that they're doing, uh, we get to have these panel interviews. Panel interviews are usually me and Mary Johnson and sometimes some extra people. That way, when it comes to if they're looking at career choices that they need some extra help with, she's right there and she can offer those things, sometimes there are internships or job shadows that can be offered based on things that they share with us. And so the two of us go through these panel interviews for every single senior. And it's been really neat to hear them talk about what they do and why they do it. And I thought, rather than me telling you about it, the best way to do it is to show you three wonderful examples from students who have done their panel interviews this year. So I'm going to invite up Tyler Nels, and Arissa Khan, and Emily Goodpastor. We're gonna start with Tyler, Tyler is a junior, and he's gonna share with you his presentation that he gave to us during his panel interview.
Okay, hello everyone, again, I'm Tyler Nels, I'm a junior at the high school and I'm also part of the Pleasant Valley Cross Country and Track teams. So, I'm gonna start off with giving you a little bit about my service learning journey. So, next slide. So I did my volunteering with the Quad City Marathon, where I have now, um, at this point in the junior year, done over a hundred hours volunteering with the Quad City Marathon. And I've done everything from helping with pre-race during the middle of races, because the Quad City Marathon also does like the firecracker, freedom run, Cinco de Mayo, it's not just the Quad City Marathon itself. So I did a lot of help getting all those things ready, getting medals ready, doing packet pickups, and then also helping get the races ready themselves at the sites, and then also picking up after the races. And um, I've been volunteering there since the beginning of freshman year, I reached out to Phil Young, who worked at Fleet Feet, and that's how I learned about the Quad City Marathon. And then ever since then, I've been volunteering with them and loving it. And so here's some of my volunteering highlights so far. So, on the very left, you can see some of the pre-race activities that I would be doing, which is like sorting all the different medals for all the different finishers, making sure that they're all organized by gender and age, so then at the race itself, they can be handed out accordingly. And then also with the post-race, some races I would even be running in, as you can see there, and then after I would be helping pick up for a few hours, making sure that everything's put back inside the marathon warehouse. And on the right side, my favorite part of all this volunteering, which is the Quad City Marathon. This past year, I was there for twelve hours. Got up early in the morning at five AM to go work at the water station that we do as a part of the Pleasant Valley Cross Country team. And then I also was at the marathon finish line for ten hours, helping with the finishers itself, and then also for about five hours after, helping pick up all the things that were happening at the Quad City Marathon. In fact, I was like the last person to leave. So that was a pretty fun experience, and then in the middle. So for the Quad City Marathon, I was volunteering under Joe Morano, who is the director of the Quad City Marathon, and he's been a really great mentor. And has helped me be able to get in contact with my community and make a difference. Um, I've used Joe as my recommendation for the National Honor Society, I plan to use him for job interviews and for applying to colleges. And um, I've also learned a lot about how to make an impact to my community, so. I'm starting a fundraiser, or using a fundraising company called Sneakers for Good, which is a shoe drive organization where they collect shoes and they take, and then they give you back money for donating shoes that you're able to use to fundraise for different organizations, and then they send the shoes to third world countries into small org- businesses so that they're able to grow. So with the Belmont Mile, which is happening in early June, I'm gonna be doing a shoe drive attached to that, which will help raise money for the Midr- for the Track Guy Foundation, which helps kids and I will be able to get into running and buy running shoes so that they're able to run. And that's my volunteering experience. Any questions?
So is this Sneakers for Good something that you've developed, or is this?
No, so this is an organization, yeah. So after working with Joe Morano, he was, I was asking him for help on organizations that I could use for this, and he recommended me these people, so I've been in contact with them. Um, working to get this all set up.
Is this the same organization that does like the tough mutters and then you go to?
Yeah, they do a lot of different mud run things.
Yeah, mud run, exactly, and then you just think, like, there's a huge pile of shoes at the very end of the race?
Yeah.
Just give their, their shoes away, and this is sort of the same program?
Yeah.
Okay, and you're, so then you'll do them after these marathons, basically?
So, the Bel- so I'm doing at the Belmont Mile, which is something that was actually created by one of my cross country coaches, Nick Sacco. Um, so it's kind of like a regional miles event where there's community races, elite races, high school races, junior high races. So the shoe bins will be set up at the entrance where people can bring a lot of their old running shoes and be able to turn those in to reuse.
Tyler, you clearly have a passion for running, which really helps why you're doing these hours as well, cause you enjoy this. Do you feel you would have put this much work into it hadn't not been for community service, or your service learning hours, or you think that sparked this in you, or you would have done this anyway?
So I feel like I would have still volunteered, but I never would have learned about the Quad City Marathon or anything like that if there hadn't been a service learning requirement. Because I first reached out to Phil Young, cause I had known him from all the different five Ks that I had done growing up, and he was the one that was able to introduce me to Joe Morano. So I feel like I never would have made the connection to Joe if it hadn't been for the service learning hours.
And you feel like in the future, once you're done with high school, you think you'll still donate hours and time and give back to the community in, in situations just like this?
Yes, and uh, at all the college visits too that I've been at, they talk about all the different volunteering opportunities that they have in college. And I know that when I would go to college, I definitely wanna be a part of those.
So was the Quad City Marathon something that was already on the list, or is that something that you sought out and brought?
That was something that I sought out and then brought it, yeah.
Okay, and then to do that, um, the students just have to come and?
They just say, this is what I wanna do through the junior senior project, they do a project proposal, so we see what they're looking to do. We approve the proposal, and then they take the time to map out, here's how I'm gonna get my hours, so they've created their roadmap. Akin to any other academic course at the school, then they have their, here's what I'm gonna learn, here's sort of my syllabus, do the work, and then the panel panel interview at the end is their reflection, and almost like their culminating activity in a unit.
Tyler, what has been, what's been your favorite part of all the service learning that you've done so far?
Um, I mean, there's a lot of silly things that end up happening while volunteering there, like Joe sometimes will like randomly take us out to lunch in East Moline, and that's been pretty fun, and then like, um, I didn't put in the presentation, but there's a lot of old oddities and stuff that are the Quad City Marathon warehouse that we'll like randomly come across. So like, there's a lot of volunteering, but we also like have a little bit of fun while we're doing it as well.
Tyler, did you wanna introduce your family to us?
Oh yeah, and with me, I have my mom, Janae, and my dad, Joe.
Thank you very much.
Next, we're gonna bring up senior Arissa Khan. She's gonna talk about her project. That's fun.
Hi, I'm Arissa Khan. Okay, um, I did my service learning hours at Nahamp Marsh, which is a local wildlife, uh, like reservation thing, uh, down in Davenport. So what I did is I was a research assistant, um, Nahamp participates in the Iowa-Illinois-Nebraska STEM partnership with the um, program LSAMP, which is the Louis Stokes Alliance for Minority Participation, which is a program designed to increase minority participation in the STEM field. And last year they had about six or seven college-age students who were running their own scientific inquiries, so they presented their own hypothesis and then did their own research around the marsh, and I was helping out with uh, their research as an extra set of hands. Um, I worked closely on a few of them in particular, so. Uh, in particular, I worked on the Blending's turtle population, there was this guy named Eli who was at um, school in Moline, I can't remember the one, exact one. But he was looking at Blending's turtle populations in the Quad Cities, which is an endangered species in Iowa and Illinois. And he was looking to see um, breeding patterns, to see how uh, they could adapt the marsh to better suit the turtles' breeding um, patterns, to make sure the population was getting up. So this was one of the turtles that we were tracking, this is a female, and you can see the um, tracker that we placed on her shell in epoxy. Um, I remember one, like my first day, it was really, really hot, and they stuck me in a pair of big rubber waders that were too big for me, and we went out in a bunch of cat tails that were like way taller than my head, for like two hours just searching for this turtle, cause she was hard to find, but it was a really fun experience and something I'm always gonna remember, so. Um, so what I learned in particular, uh, first thing I learned was data collection. Um, I worked a lot on the turtle populations, not just the blending turtles, but tracking turtle populations in the marsh. Um, I learned how to correctly measure them and to handle them properly, uh, which goes into the respectful and responsible animal handling. Um, I learned that these were definitely not pets, they're wild animals. Um, at one point, we caught a snapping turtle, which you can see Mick Holderson holding in that picture, um, that one was fun. Um, it was really interesting to interact with the animals as well as to learn about how to handle them properly and respectfully. I learned about collaboration and working with all the different college students, as well as the um, marsh coordinators and research coordinators. And then I also learned about the importance of conservation and learning about how important biodiversity is, especially in a community like ours. Um, Nahamp didn't really strike me as like, you know, when I think of nation, like a wildlife reservation, I'm thinking like Yosemite or something bigger, but and it taught me how important uh, local conservation is, and the important work that Nahamp is doing to preserve wildlife in the Quad Cities. Um, applicability, I think the work that I did over the summer is really going to apply to the work I plan to do in my career. Um, I really want to go into astrobiology, which is a very interdisciplinary field. Um, I've done a lot of the physics work these past two years with AP Physics one and AP Physics two. But um, my biology was cut short because of COVID, so this has really helped me to reconnect with that side before I go into a major in biology and physics next year at Iowa. Um, I'm really excited to do some more work in the field, hopefully, as well as to sort of connect it with my physics knowledge and see where it takes me. And it was also like a lot of fun, so. Thank you.
So what, after you've done this, what are your career aspirations?
Um, I'm planning on going into astrobiology, like I said, so that would require me to uh, minor, or major in uh, in my undergrad in applied science, so I chose physics and biology, and there is a program at University of Washington that does a dual certificate with in applied science and astrobiology, so that's mainly research-based, I'm still doing research on like specifically where I would want to work. But it's um, a lot of finding uh, signs of life on other planets, so like those Mars missions with the Perseverance rovers and stuff, they're bringing back samples so that we can take a look and see if there are any signs of life on Mars, so.
So that's kinda what you wanna do, like maybe go into like something with like astrobiologists for NASA or something?
Yeah, hopefully, that'd be, that's the dream.
And Arissa, do you wanna introduce you?
I brought my mom, Amy, her name, come.
Well, you seem very excited about your future, so enjoy that passion that you have, it's just fun, kinda fun to watch you light up when you're talking about it, so best of luck to you.
Thank you. And the final example we wanted to share with you is Emily Goodpastor, she is also a senior this year.
Okay, uh, this is my passion project, we provided medical first aid for Ukraine, as you know, uh, there's a war going on there right now with human aggression. Uh, next slide, please. My name's Emily Goodpastor, I'm a graduating senior at PV. And I've been a part of their varsity volleyball program for the past three years, I also co-founded their Future Physicians of America club. And I will be attending Case Western Reserve University on the pre-med track while also playing volleyball. Next slide, please. Uh, my mom is from Ukraine, which makes me half Ukrainian. Uh, and so when the war started uh, last February, it felt really close and personal. And we just wanted to see if we could step in and help in any possible way. Uh, we began by talking with friends and relatives that we have in Ukraine, as well as military personnel, doctors, medical professionals, et cetera. And we devised a plan to provide medical aid, as I mentioned before. Um, since the war began right before Easter time, we decided to host Pisencio Workshop. Um, since the war began right before Easter time, we decided to host Pisencio workshops. And this Pisencio is a Ukrainian tradition where they decorate Easter eggs. And my mom is super, super talented, so we would host the, uh, workshops at our house. And she would teach people how to decorate these eggs and we would, I mean, talk about the situation in Ukraine, spread awareness and also raise money as well through those. Uh, and then later we also ended up launching a GoFundMe online, which, uh, that's like a picture of, just an example of how we put it out there on Instagram. That's a flyer that my mom made for the workshops. It's how we kind of spread the word. And then the picture at the bottom is my volleyball team supporting the cause. So we had so much support from the community and it was amazing to see. Uh, next slide, please. So we ended up purchasing a, a little over fourteen thousand dollars in medical supplies. All of this money was raised, uh, through both of our fundraisers. And we were able to pack and send about three hundred first aid kits and additional medical supplies, which ended up in military hospitals in Ukraine. So I spent over eighty hours on this project. This included, uh, researching products that would go in to the first aid kits. And then we also had to work with cost efficiency, obviously, and talking to people in the military just to see what products are actually useful to soldiers out in the front lines and stuff. And we also talked with doctors to see what products they, uh, advise. Um, and then I think our project was super successful. We've actually been asked for a second time this year to continue our support. So we are in the process of doing our second round. We've continued to do the, uh, Easter egg workshops this year. And, uh, we continue to keep providing aid as long as the war goes on. Uh, next slide, please. Uh, okay, so the next two slides, I added a couple of pictures for you. Um, do you mind if I walk up here? Um, okay, so this is what our living room looked like for like the entire summer. We had like, this is like a quarter of the boxes that we had just stacked to max with, uh, first aid kits. We'd packaged them in Ziploc bags and they were put into military, proper military bags. Once they got to Ukraine, you'll see on the next slide. Uh, and then these are boxes of tourniquets. It turns out that tourniquets were in extremely high demand and they couldn't get any. They were on back order for months and they needed that as quickly as possible. So they were like, if you can send anything, send the tourniquets. Uh, so what we did was my uncles are engineers and they have a 3D printing business. So we ended up being able to work with them and 3D print. And do the tourniquets. Uh, next slide, please. Uh, to kind of sum up, I put a few pictures. Um, we were able to share our story with two, uh, news channels, uh, which was super cool. I really enjoyed sharing my story with them. And through these, uh, we also, uh, people were able to see our link and they, there are people we didn't even know. We've got so much community support just from people who knew us. Uh, okay, this is, these are the military bags that I was talking about. These are kids that were volunteering in Ukraine and helping package the supplies into the pits. Uh, this is a picture we got when, uh, soldiers actually received our first aid kits. Um, and then this picture, uh, we sent a test batch over. So this is like our first, it was a little under a hundred kits that we sent to hospitals so that they could approve them first. And that was a success, so we were able to send two hundred. But, um, I plan to go into the medical field. I want to be a surgeon one day. So this project, uh, super passionate about this. I thought this was like an amazing opportunity. I was able to speak with so many professionals in the field that I hope to go into. And it was just really, really neat to be able to be on the inside of this project because I was literally like handling the medical supplies by myself and being able to see how everything just comes together. And, uh, the teamwork aspect is huge. That's something I really look forward to in my career, is the teamwork. So obviously my mom was a huge part of this project, um, with the, like workshops. And she has her connections in Ukraine, which is mostly how we were able to be so successful. Any questions?
So how were you able, you said that you had sent these supplies via Poland? So how were you able to get the supplies there? I mean, because I remember when the war is first, uh, being medicine, we actually, I, we, uh, we're part of a surgery center. We donated a bunch of supplies and it went to some military planes in Chicago and they sent it, they, they flew it directly into Ukraine. And that, so we had to get everything all wrapped up within like a day because that, that plane was leaving. How were you able to get these sent over there?
Okay, so since we're not part of any organization or foundation or anything like that, uh, we had to, with Ukraine's like skies being pretty much closed off, we had to send our kits in like about ten suitcases, uh, with friends that we knew who were traveling to Ukraine. But they couldn't get directly into Ukraine. They couldn't get a flight directly into Ukraine. So we could fly to Poland and then from there they would, uh, cross the border into Ukraine.
Impressive. So have you considered an international flavor to your future career because of this?
Uh, I definitely have. I, I do plan, well, okay. First, we did want to go into Ukraine ourselves and help out there firsthand, but it was obviously really dangerous. And with COVID too, we thought that it was possible that we would get stuck there and not be able to return for a while. And we wanted to continue our project, so we thought it would be a smarter idea to just provide aid like we are. Um, and the international aspect, I definitely do plan to do some international things. I think it's amazing. Well, I mean, we were sitting here in the United States like safe from the war and we're like, how can we possibly help? So, um, anything we can do, I think, I mean, using what our country has to offer, the better of other countries that need it, I think is something that's good.
So you mentioned the tourniquets, um, which was a large need and the 3D printing company obviously helped. Um, what else did you guys put in the first aid kits?
Oh, we had, okay, each first aid kit was a little under, uh, it was around thirty dollars to forty dollars. Um, so we had burn shields, butterfly closures, uh, tons of gauze pads, different types of gauzes, uh, bandages. Um, tourniquets, obviously. We also had the, um, two types of like scissors to cut like bandages and stuff. Uh, tons of Band-Aids, uh, antiseptics, um, ointments, tons of supplies, so.
And like congratulations on making such a difference and not sitting back and just thinking what you could do, but actually taking the initiative to move this forward and helping people in different countries is very well, so we're very proud of you.
And we would like to introduce you.
My mom's sitting right there. Yeah, as you know, she's from Ukraine, so all, all, we couldn't have done this without her, so. It was amazing.
Good luck at K-Son, your pre-trac. In fact, my nephew's going there as well. He's on a pre-med track as well, so you might need.
What's he majoring in?
Uh, he's, he's on a pre-med track, so it'll probably be something like biology.
Okay.
So these are just three examples of all the things that I get to hear almost on a daily basis. Um, as part of that interview process, we take them through talking about what are the strengths that you brought to this project? What were weaknesses or challenges that you had? We ask them about how they see those, um, strengths and weaknesses and skills that they developed doing their service learning, applying to what's the next step in their life, be it trade school or straight to a job or to a college. And so we're helping them to make those connections. And while not every student gives us a presentation like this, every student makes connections that are really important. I had one young man come in and he was like, well, I got them done. And as we talked more about it, he said, you know, I did this project because my next door neighbor said, hey, I've got this project that I'm doing for Rotary and I need helpers. You need service hours, come help me. And he was like, well, he's a nice guy, I went to help him. But he said, so I did all this stuff and it didn't seem really hard, but then when I went to help him, it was for their blanket project. And so he helped to build the boxes and paint them. And then he went to go help with the collection. And when he saw the amount of blankets that had been amassed, because they went this route with the boxes, he said, I had no idea that just by doing something that was just simple, helping out my neighbor who said, come help me, that this made such a huge impact in our community. Another student tells us the other day that, you know, you live in Pleasant Valley and we have so many privileges, but if you go five miles down the road, you have a very different picture of what life is like. And to be able to have those different perspectives as you go out into the world is a gift. Someone told me, everybody should have to do service learning at every high school because being able to give back and to volunteer and to have the resources and the means to be able to do that is one of the greatest privileges we have. So we have put a thing on the service learning website now where there are quotes from our students. These panel interviews show them saying some really insightful things. And these young people are developing skills that they will certainly take with them as they go out into the world. And they're able to make these connections. They're building skills they can use in the workplace. Doing the panel interview helps them because all of the colleges are moving to panel interviews as entrance interviews. Jobs are all panel interviews. I know Pleasant Valley, you're familiar with, does panel interviews for every one of our jobs that we have. So they're gaining these skills of how do you navigate these interviews? It's also very important because we have found in the job market that since COVID, employers are really looking at people more holistically. They've lost people who say, I don't feel supported. I don't have the tools in my job. And so they want to get to know them and they want to be able to support them through things. Recent studies show that our graduating class is going to go through seventeen careers in their lifetime, not jobs, careers. So those are how many shifts they will make. And so this panel interview that we're seeing happening in the workforce is really helping to combat some of that by really taking those skills that people have and supporting them and moving them around within a company to best utilize their skills and to make them happy so that they will stay for longer. So they're gaining all sorts of skills by doing the panel interview. They're gaining all sorts of skills being out in the workplace. A couple of the students mentioned this gave me, people who gave me recommendations, who are able to speak to future employers. So they're doing really great work out there from the sublime to some of the things. We had students who went to help in flood efforts and helping to sandbag just across the street. We had people who are helping out at the YMCA this summer for their summer camps. We have them all over doing things. We even have some students who still need those online options. And for them, we found a new organization that's called Letters Against Depression. And it's young people writing letters of support to other young people to help them feel that they are needed and wanted and prized within this world. And to help them so that they choose other alternatives than some of the things that they may have considered in the past for dealing with their problems. So there are tons of things going on. We have a great time every day seeing all the different projects and learning new things that are coming out. We continue to make new partnerships in the community and we celebrate these wonderful projects that these three students did as well as the simple everyday things that our students are doing to make a difference in our community. So thank you for your time. Thank you for your support of this program. It does make a difference. And while some people will say why, this tells you why. It's worth it. So thank you. Did you have any, I went to walk away. Did you have any other questions?
I don't, I mean, I'm just really thrilled that you were able to bring us these three, these three presentations. We've seen the programs evolve over the last several years under your direction. You know, if people ask about service learning, this helps all of us as a board. We're able to explain why do we do this and the amount of educational experiences that these students are getting outside of the classroom, getting ready to sort of leave our district and go elsewhere, those experiences are, um, uh, wouldn't be found in a classroom. And that's what makes us so important. And to be able to match people's passion with a service learning project, I think, as something that they'll be able to take with them in the future, once they even get out of college, into their own community that they decide, that they decide to live with.
And it's nice to see how many of them say, I didn't really think service learning was a good thing. I didn't really want to do it. But once I started doing it and I saw the impact that the work I was doing made, it made it very important to me and I understood why I did it, so.
Thanks for that. It's great.
Thank you.
Thanks to all the present contributors today and all the work that you've done. Okay, moving on, um, we have, um, Pleasant Valley High School baseball, softball, parking lot expansion project. Mr. Struza, Mr. and, um, Leland?
Yep. So things here, as you look at this in your board supportive materials, you'll see there are three different views of what we're looking at right now. Uh, this project, you might be asking, why are we looking extending the baseball softball parking lot right now? This is really phase one of what our second conversation tonight with FRK about the expansion of the high school. Um, we look at the expansion of the high school, we will lose, um, parking look spots because of the expansion where the, uh, everything will set, the setting stage will be for that. Um, we have talked about the need as we continue to grow that we need additional parking spots. Remember that conversation we had with EICC last year? Uh, we've been very fortunate. We haven't had to borrow their spaces this year, but this really sets up us up into the future. And you can kind of see how it lays out right now. If you were to go up to our baseball softball field, the first parking row that you see is actually kind of overlapping our current parking lot right now. So there are two different layouts of this project. Uh, one could add potentially fifty parking spots, another about fifty-seven parking spots, depending on how they do the striping. But we'll work through the striping piece further into this project. Right now it's just, here's the space that we have and that's the location it will be. So, uh, you also see in the board packet the kind of timeline that we are looking at between now and the start of the school year. And this project would probably finish up, we're thinking somewhere in that September, October-ish range. The good news is when you look at, uh, student parking, we have less kids that have parking permits or parking in the fall. The spring gets heavier, so even though we're taking some of these spots, we will still be okay to start the school year. It's not like we need those spots, but we'll need those spots when we start the following summer, yes. So, you have any things you want to add?
Well, the estimated cost, preliminary estimated cost right now is two hundred and fifty to three hundred thousand to have these spots. So, and to do the next topic we're going to talk about, if we'd actually do the expansion on the high school, we have to have these before that project can start.
The, the setting up will be in the front area of the, of the high school, so all those will be gone, right?
It's, it's actually on the southwest side.
Southwest side?
And we'll go over those slides in a few minutes.
How slanted is it there?
It's not as bad as you would think. So if you were to drive up there and look at, it kind of has a natural grade down to that retention pond that sits right there. And there's a couple of light poles that sit off in the grassy area. That's about where this would go to. Maybe some dirt, but we haven't got to that point yet.
So you said that this would have about fifty to fifty-seven spots?
Correct.
And during the expansion of the high school, how many spots will be taken away?
So I think once the expansion is completely done, this is just a real quick me going out the last couple of days and counting. Where the picture lines up, we might lose around forty to fifty parking spots, which is currently our teacher section. Um, so we have to move some teachers probably down to a different area. Um, but I would say right around that fifty, well, the same number of spots we gained here is what we're going to lose in our other parking lot.
And you'll lose that because of the expansion.
Correct.
But then you're also going to be losing, you'll be losing those same spots then while they're doing the project, because they have to set up all this stuff.
There'll be additional spots you'll lose because of staging.
So, so we'll be at a negative during the whole expansion project?
Correct.
Yes.
So you might ask, what do we do about that? Well, there's two things that could happen. Number one, we could go back to EICC and say, we need to borrow for another year. If we were to find more money, the other option is we expand the east lot further, the big lot that we have right over here. You know, let's expand that from, I think, another seventy or so parking spots there.
So how did you choose to do this lot versus what you just said?
Cost. This is cheaper to do this one than what the other one would have come into.
This one's blacked out. Now it's concrete, so.
It just, this is a little further away though, correct?
It is.
Yeah.
The same?
You know what, I bet they're going to buy you one.
If you walk to the end of this lot, right here, I guess, it'd probably be like walking out to the end of that softball lot.
Two things I would say, why this one, if you ever go to a baseball softball games, we have a big doubleheader going on in two games at home. That parking lot is full, yes. Um, and then the other thing is I'd like to delay that one for as long as we possibly can, just because of the issues we've had over the years and.
The racing and all that.
Yes, correct.
Do we anticipate the? Do we anticipate that they will move into this area and do the racing?
I hope not. If, if they do, I would say we would probably put the barric, or whatever they'll call it.
The gates on there.
The gates have solved the issue.
I think that we should just plan on putting the gates there, so that they know that they can't do it.
Possibility.
Diagram that you've got, that I'm looking at, has seventy.
Yes, that is correct. But what happens is we're covering up about twenty, thirteen to twenty in the current layout that we have. Yeah, you're exactly right.
Oh yeah, that's an overlap you're saying?
Yep. Yep. And we've talked about, a couple of different layouts would be, you could, you know how the, on the slant, the white part right now?
Uh huh.
Where you drive in, you could fill those sections in too with cars. But it would make it a real long, you have to drive all the way around the parking lot. This allows you to come in and go straight and go left or right. We'll see when we get there, we get the striping, what we want to do. But I would say it's probably one or two with, I would probably lean towards version number two, exhibit number two. Fifty-seven, maximize what we can get.
Any other questions from the board? If not, then you'll see the timeline there where on the twenty-second, twenty-second, the drawings, drawings will be sent to the city for second hand review. Then on the twelfth, final drawings, and then June fourteenth is when the bid goes out. No, the advertising for the bid, and then twenty-ninth is when the bidding is. So July seventeenth, we would approve the bids that we get back. And then on August first would be when they would start and hopefully it'd be done by September forty-first.
And, and right now, that July seventeenth date is about when we could start doing the project also, according to Deanne Kramer. So we might be able to get, if the contract is available, we could get it going yet, middle of July. Let's see.
So people are okay with this, then let's take a, there's no other question?
I know the board approves schematic documents and cost projections for the Pleasant Valley High School baseball softball parking lot expansion.
Motion of Ms. Hoskins, I want Mr. Ayers of the board to approve the schematic documents and cost projections for the Pleasant Valley High School basketball softball parking lot expansion. Roll call, please, Ms. Damon.
Mr. Ayers?
Yes.
Ms. Brockman?
Yes.
Ms. Hoskin?
Yes.
Mr. Chang?
Yes.
Ms. Conkle?
Yes.
Ms. Rivera?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, stay right there, Leland. The next up is the Pleasant Valley High School building addition. Mr. Struce, you want to start with this as well?
I will, you bet. So this is an exciting time. We've talked about where we are at the high school. We currently have seventeen hundred students roughly at the high school. And we are, for the most part, pretty tight at seventeen hundred. And so our question has been, how do we look at expansion? And when do we start the expansion? And when do we get going so that we are not overly tight for the next couple of years? We've been working with FRK probably about the last year or at least six months, trying to figure out what our options are. In your supporting materials tonight, you will see multiple phases of where we may go with the high school. But really tonight, we want to focus on one piece of this. Tom will talk about today, what our day looked like today and all the different groups we've met with at the high school. But this, this addition, if we go with what we see on paper today, would take us from seventeen hundred students to twenty-five hundred students. We'd have space for eight hundred more students at the high school. So we're looking at cafeteria space, what does that look like? Serving lines, what does that look like? And all the different options that we could have. If you look at our history, eight hundred students at the high school could be anywhere from a ten to fifteen year window of which that would fill up. That's kind of our, where we've been. Some, some questions we've had to ask ourselves, do you add on to the far east side of the building? Do we add on to southwest corner? How large do you make this addition? Because you never know what the population's going to do for sure. So those are all questions we have tried to process here. And then also, how do we go about funding this project in terms of what does that look like? How big do we go? We have talked about, do you go down the path of a general obligation bond? And, and make this bigger than what we're looking at here. We've always stayed kind of with our smaller projects. We've always tried to pay in with our capital and our savings, our one percent sales tax. That has always been our mission. So we're looking at that kind of in that same vein here again today. But please feel free to, as we go through this, to ask any questions you have. Because we are totally right now in the beginning stage of this process and just going through what our options are. So with that, I will turn it over to Tom and Leland and we'll share more as we go through this process, so.
We'll kind of go through the first few slides quickly. The, just to give you a sense, you know, here's, here's the high school. We'll just talk about who's working on the project for the district, a little bit about the background, tentative schedule that we've put together, and then we'll look at some drawings. And so the team that we have, the next slide would, would show you who that is. Same team that we have in place for the Forest Grove and Junior High project that's ongoing right now. So FRK will be working with you for architectural and structural design. And then IMEG engineering, right here in the Quad Cities, will be doing mechanical, electrical, and civil work. So a little bit about the background, we've just been talking with leadership here in the district since about last summer of where you go with all of your enrollment growth projections and your, your attendance center needs. So we just put together a lot of information to digest and to consider. And then from all of that has come this, this project that really needs to be right at the starting gate. So the next project, or the next slide here is, is, is the first phase of the high school project. And we'll talk about some possible phases after that. But the timeline for this project needs to be aggressive so that by the fall of 2025 for your 2025, 2026 school year, you will have this additional capacity available to you. So that pink portion there, on the left hand of the center of this timeframe is really the design phase, which we are just beginning right now. And thank you to Superintendent Struce, principals, leaders at the high school today. Leland and I and our team, we spent pretty much all day inside that conference room talking to teachers, talking to custodial staff, talking to facilities, administrators, food service, about what the needs would be for this building addition. So we're off to a good start with a lot of information gathered. So we will work until this fall with the projected suggestion to bid the project in December and then start construction as soon as we can get going after the first of the year. So break ground kind of March-ish and then spend eighteen months under construction being right before that 2025 school year. So the next slide here, just kind of shares some of the other phases that could ensue as we march through that building and look at the other opportunities we would have to enhance that building and make it work for the enrollment growth that's projected and to address some of the, the needs within the building. Phase one would be expanded capacity for students as well as looking at the cafeteria area and trying to resolve some of the congestion that you see in that space with that program. Phase two could be some career and technology additions and renovations, followed right after that by going ahead and putting that second part of a large gymnasium. As you're aware, the project that was several years ago, put the big gym on with the idea that it would become a large competition gym. Phase two and phase three might be looked at at similar times, since that would be construction activity in that same area, you'd see some efficiencies there. Phase four could be then taking your existing gym and converting that into an auditorium and then dressing up the front of that part of the building. And then a phase five, if needed, would be additional classroom space in the northeast corner where that first tower went up a couple of years ago. So looking at the drawings, and I might step over here and point to areas. North is up, so Belmont at the front of the school, the stadium is here. We're looking at the addition being in the southwest corner of the current two-story towers. We would wrap around that with a new three-story addition. And then you'll see the expansion of the cafeteria. But at the very lowest level of this three-story addition would be an opportunity to create spaces that would address the visitor side of the stadium for perhaps toilet rooms, team room, concessions, and some storage. It just is, we're going to have to go down that deep in order to support the building. Creates an awesome opportunity to just to have that space directly relate to the sidewalks on the visitor entrance to the stadium. So moving up one level in the next slide, and this is the main level of the high school, so you begin to see the rest of the school filling out. The addition we're looking at for phase one would be to wrap the existing towers here with about twenty-four more classrooms, twenty-five more classrooms, five science classrooms, general education classrooms, special education, and all the supporting services that you would need, toilet rooms, mechanical rooms, electrical rooms. Circulation is shown in the blue with some new stair towers. Changing the entry point on the west side. And, and here's where Brian was talking about some parking that you would lose on the west side. fingerprints on your screen. And then some exciting opportunities here on the backside of your auditorium would be to create a circulation path as we think about the high school cafeteria and how kids get in and kids exit the cafeteria. If we create an entry point into the cafeteria, servery area on the south side and up the west side, kids can come down for lunch hour, go into the serving area, come out into the cafeteria, and then exit back into the building at that corner where everybody goes past each other currently. In addition to that, we would look at expanding the cafeteria for increased capacity when you're going to have maybe five, six hundred kids in there for a lunch hour. A little bit of change here to the current scene shop for the auditorium. We would be taking part of that for a circulation pathway, so we'll add some space back to that program. And then while we're on this sheet, you can see some of the other phases. Phase two, projected possibility of doing something with career and technology education. Phase three is that gym. Phase four would take your existing gym and repurpose it as an auditorium. And then phase five, if needed, could be additional classroom space in the northeast corner of the campus. And then the next slide shows what we would look at for the second floor of this suggested wraparound addition on the southwest corner of the building. Basically, the same footprint that's on the first floor would be repeated on the second floor. And then you can see where your current tower is a three-story. The idea if more classrooms were added there, it would be some classroom expansion in that northwest corner. So we can flip back and forth on the plans. But that's the, that's the concept that we're looking at here for phase one in that southwest corner of the, of the building. It just seems to make a tremendous amount of sense in terms of where you, where you see the core of educational activity happening in that half of the building to, to create new education space there. I think works very nicely.
If you can go back one slide, that'd be great. A couple of things, just from your perspective, trying to look at how this all plays out. Let's go back to that set shop, you know, where the hallway is going to go. Because we're going through the current scene shop, we're creating a hallway through there. We put big roller doors so that they can go from the set shop into, into the theater and just go across that hallway, so that'd be nice. One thing you know, the, the current tower we have right now, and you drive by, you see the big glass staircase. We'd use that same idea on the backside, so when you're looking from the football stadium at the school, on that addition, both the ends of the new addition would have a big glass staircase you're looking at, so kind of tying everything together. The front of the school where the cafeteria extension is, that goes out to the front of our current building, so you have a nice line there. And then we'd also use that same blue look, high ceiling across the foot, trying to draw a nice look to the front of the school and relatively inexpensive cost in that regard, because it's just putting together. Our library roof would still stay slanted until we ever get to the auditorium phase, then we'd do that change. But just really trying to tie this building together, even though we've had a lot of additions to it, making it seem like it's one building. The other thing I would add, the yellow that you see, those are science classrooms. You're familiar with our building, those would back into current science classrooms already. So what we have is science classrooms, and behind them, they have their storage room. So you have science classroom, storage room. Then for the new addition, storage room, science classroom. So they could actually go from side to side into those storage rooms from both sides. So science students were very happy that that would take place and be able to walk from each other's classroom.
Are there any old science classrooms in the tower?
There are four right now, correct.
So those would still stay there?
Correct. Science classrooms are ones whereby law, we have twenty-four kids in them. The number of science classes that we offer, we just need, they're so specific to what we have that we believe adding these five in there, Mike promises me with his calculations this would take us, we are good with science classrooms.
And then there'll be science classes in both ends of the building.
That is correct, yes.
Questions?
Would we have an elevator in this area?
We have talked about that, especially if we do that lower section, so there's like three floors to it. There is an elevator designed. Unless we were looking for a cost savings, we could always cut that out, correct, Tom? You would have to put that in there, or do we need to?
If, if the lower level becomes something that's related to the building, we may need to provide that vertical circulation for ADA compliance.
Because there are other elevators pretty far away than the other, by the library, basically.
But would there be a way to connect from that elevator all the way back to there?
Oh no, that, the other one, the existing one doesn't, I'm sorry, apologize, correct.
That's why you would need to.
Lower level, the elevator.
Lower level, yes.
So I remember before the last renovation that we did, we were looking, when we, when the tower was built. If I remember correctly, I don't know, maybe Jordine Maule.
I'm going to ask the same question. I think that's going to come out of your mouth.
Was that there was going to be three more towers behind the first tower. That's what we had planned on. So now this is completely different than what we had talked about when we initially talked about future expansion of the high school. So why has there been a change?
Several reasons, I think, and, and others who have been part of the conversation, please make sure that I'm not missing something. One of the, the, the drivers for the possibility of expanding your future growth in the northeast corner was the idea at some point that might become a separate ninth grade center. There would be kind of a school within a school. In the sense that we're having now with, with curriculum direction and, and the administration of the school, that that really doesn't make sense. We'd like to see the whole school be ninth through twelfth and not separate that out. And the idea with that, when that was finished, there would be cafeteria there. So a separate food service costs, a separate food service center in that area. So it becomes almost, again, a school within a school. By doing the addition here, we're, we're integrating the new classroom space that really needs to be there for the enrollment growth projections, more back into the core of the school. There's a little bit of a sense that it feels like an awfully long walk to go down to that northeast. So to continue to add more with the idea that perhaps a separate ninth grade center really isn't the future of the building, this seemed to make a little bit more sense. Does that capture that conversation?
Although even if we didn't do a separate ninth grade center, we'd still add towers and just have it be more classrooms, right?
You could.
And so is this, which is more economical and which one make the more, sort of make more sense?
One thing we talked about over many conversations was when you keep adding on to that other corner, you're losing all that parking space eventually, which was one conversation we had. We also knew we had to address our, one of our biggest issues is our cafeteria. Because right now, we have almost six hundred kids, three hundred leaving, three hundred coming at the same time through one doorway. And so this allows us to have that hallway behind the current theater come up, so it creates a nice flow that way. We'd also talked about for a long time, adding science classrooms onto our current science classrooms that we had, because it's a nice place to have those. And maximizing our space. When we started doing that, we came back with, what happens if we put classrooms back there? We have the footprint to be able to do that, we said yes. Then we started taking the walk back there, we said, hey, we can gain some ground underneath here as well that we weren't planning on before with the locker rooms, concession stand, restrooms, things of that nature. So one thing that's nice, we do put the restrooms underneath that facility for home visitor, for visitor football games. Those restrooms are attached to our building. We don't have to worry about building the number of restrooms that they would require in a stadium, because we can't afford to put the number of restrooms that they want you to have for the number of people we have there. So again, a lot of us just kind of a nice connection piece and it's, to be honest with you, I've laid awake at many nights going, is this better or is that better?
Even the top, more tower?
Yes. Thought about it many, many times, and we've asked ourselves that question over and over in multiple meetings, saying, which we believe is best.
And we went to the point where the, that parking area that's on that southwest side is in poor shape. During construction, it's just gonna get ruined more. So actually, as part of that project, that parking lot just to the west of it all gets resurfaced and redone.
And the one down below too.
No, well, if we include, like now, it's not included, but.
Right. But we will, yeah.
But we, but we need to, yes. I think that to really address the issues, the circulation, the capacity, the crowdedness in the cafeteria, needed to happen sooner rather than later. Before you'd be able to add as much space in the northeast corner, add a second cafeteria to relieve that congestion. That really kind of drove the idea, let's, let's focus the work perhaps on the west side and the cost savings of not having two food service, production centers, two kitchens, two sets of personnel. There's some, there's some thinking along those lines that on the staffing side, there are some advantages as well.
When talking to our food service personnel today, we asked about, you know, equipment and what they would need. And they said they can, right now, they're only using their equipment at half the level that they need. So we have to add no equipment to this. We have to add two more serving, or cashier lines, we have four cashier lines to get kids through quickly. But right now, they serve, in fifteen minutes, they'll serve three hundred kids lunch right now. And so double that, they can get a lot of kids through this in a very quick, short time, and we can just do a small extension there. I don't know, Mike, you've been a part of these conversations from the tower to where we are today, anything you would add?
Well, for what low value it's worth. You know, as kid, my big push was to add on and extend that science addition, basically the nineteen seventy-four addition. Extend that out, try and buy you some time. When this came back, we looked at it, first go around was, okay, how many kids will this get us to? I know the board has been talking about, and Brian's vision has been six fifty, six hundred fifty in a graduating class. It has been well researched that when you get to class size of seven hundred or right in that general vicinity, you have to make a decision, what are you going to do? Are you gonna go with another high school, or are you gonna continue to just get bigger? This gets you to the spot that as far as I'm concerned, I don't think you're ever gonna put a tower up there in that corner area, because at that point in time, you're gonna be able to look at your kindergarten classes, your first, your second grade. The telltale signs are gonna be there right off the bat, just like they were with Waukees, that, you know what, folks, we're, we're not gonna be a single high school district. Or you're gonna make the decision that we're going to be the largest high school in the history of the state of Iowa. Because twenty-eight hundred is as big as any high school in Iowa has gotten. Now, in Minnesota, four thousand.
Minnesota.
Yeah, Minnesota, four thousand, or in other states that are, they have high schools that large. In Iowa, we've never had a, a high school that large. But when you, if you were to make that decision to start adding that tower, that's, that's the vision you're going toward. You're saying, no, we're gonna blast right past twenty-eight hundred, we're going three thousand plus.
So we've been trying to be very strategic in what we do and always have a plan for the next phase. And I'll give you an example, at junior high, we know with adding on to the front, what that's gonna do for us. Should we have to grow a little bit larger, we can put four more classrooms on the back. We know we have that overflow again if we need it. This one here puts us at that, you know, that twenty-five hundred, so you're looking at about six hundred kids in a class, you know? If we get to that point, we're like, you know what, we're gonna make a separate ninth grade campus. We believe we can do something where they stay more centralized, then maybe we do go to that upper section there at that point. And it's basically ten, eleven, twelve and the rest of the lane, but you gotta stop and think, our ninth graders take a lot of upper level classes, so they're coming back in the building anyway, which kind of makes this a little more sense, because it's like our kids are all over this building.
So if you make the, just one cafeteria, I mean, I guess my sense was that quarter gets insanely crowded around lunch hours. And you're gonna make the cafeteria bigger now and put more people in it. So it's not gonna exacerbate that problem?
So what's very nice about this is, when you see that red section, that all comes out and that's additional seating, okay? What will happen is you'll have, one class that's coming in is going through the back. Coming down the back and on the sides, they will not even intermix with the other students. So when the other ones are leaving, they're all exiting out there. So there should be no overlap, and we should have a much clearer path leading our cafeteria. Whereas there's two groups, one coming in, one going out.
I'm not sure my, my own high schooler would intuitively know to go in the back and out the front, how is that gonna get managed?
That'll be training from day one.
So essentially, what you're saying is that once this is done, done like this, is there gonna be any more expansion besides the different phases that you've talked about? We'll have to make a decision on whether or not we wanna either build another high school, or then the next thing would be a tower.
Correct.
And at that point, we're gonna say we're gonna maybe be the biggest high school. After this is done.
Correct.
Make that decision.
What I like about this better is, both my kids have complained about the tower being so forget the far from everything. And so it continued to add there, I, I get that angle and.
I like a lot of the reasons to build a tower, but this just from a flow, and when you look at the picture of the building, it just seems more connected to the rest of the building and what it can do. I think even with the future, the expansions we have, there, the gym and the CTE, there's some things we can do there.
And you also are, you're kind of saving money with the whole bathroom thing you were mentioning about the stadium.
Correct. The other thing we're having a big conversation is, you know, the Lynn Mars, the World, the Cedar Falls, Waterloo. A lot of those schools will have end zone locker rooms, and the cost behind one of those is very difficult. So we're asking ourselves, can that locker room help us in any way that Tom was discussing? And underneath.
The lower level?
Underneath the lower level.
Oh, that second, that second, yeah.
Yeah, that could be potentially like a visit, could be a home, like a ninth grade football now, or soccer locker room for us, and the future could be a visitor locker room. But when we do the gymnasium, our conversation then goes to, when we do that, do we add football locker rooms to that? Because you just need so much space. And I think the football team would be more in favor of that, you know, being in that space. And again, we just don't have the money to add a locker room concession stand at the end of our facility, or at the end of our stadium. And why do I say that? I mean, take this sheet right here, just look at the cost of future expansions. We got some.
Oh, yeah.
Big things there. And then you look at, I would say, five years out, let's go, once these are all built out, five years from then, at twenty-nine thirty, we're gonna be looking at our elementary question, is it Bridgeview, is it Cody, is it a new elementary, what are we doing? Gymnasium at the junior high, probably has to be expanded around that same time with locker rooms, because their numbers are gonna be higher then, and then you're hitting some of these things here too. So this is phase one of where we could be, asking ourselves in another five years, where do we go?
If I could, if you flipped at the next one. This, this was a migration I wanted to show you of some of the services. So the original part athletics was in here. So this was the original gym, it's now half performing band and half wrestling room. Then that was put on. With this proposal, you're starting to see a shift where athletics is starting to move all the way over in this concentration in this area. So even the wrestling room here, that's all designed under this lower area that will move. So this space will become available. This performing arts center, I don't think we really talked about it in auditorium with the stage and everything, but anyway. That, that now concentrates band, choir, the black box. You see there's a pattern, it's all right there in the center. This portion over here re-concentrated science. So with the student moving around, you get a sense, oh, music, I should be in the center part. Oh, athletics, I'm over in this area, science, I'm, it, it has a, a sense to it. As a building gets this large, it gets easy to get lost, and you try and concentrate world languages together, sciences together, so on and so forth. That has that pattern to it. And it, it was there, whether it had been, you know, the towers over there, it was moving in that direction. There is a plan to it, so I just thought I'd point that out.
There, there, Mike, one thing we don't have on this, we've been having a conversation about, if we could take that concession stand underneath that ground level, we just talked about that new addition, we would take our current concession stand out at some point. And we're gonna need, you know, family consumer science space. And that could go right there, so that's not on our plans. We really wanna talk about just trying to look at how we have another kitchen for family consumer science, or another early education classroom. If that concession stand's gone, we can do that as part of our, our CTE expansion too.
And that was also part of when you leave one space you're abandoning and you can repurpose that, that space. Trying to figure out, how do you plan for art facilities for a building of twenty-six hundred? CTE for twenty-six, business, family consumer science, those are all pieces that you say, oh, we're just doing classrooms. Well, those are all part of supporting it. So what we're talking about is our art facilities, if I'm in the right spot, are right here. Well, I can tell you right now, our ceramics program is just growing leaps and bounds. Well, the natural place to go is to take over that science classroom, which was one of the very first science classrooms we had, is it could go right there, because it's all connected. And if you needed another space, it'd be that room. So your art now has all of that space to grow into. Well, why could those be available? Because those are science rooms now, they're moving back over to here. So you abandon the spot and it, it opens up for something else. So there's a method to the madness there of trying to allow other programs work and they expand to, to meet the demand also, without adding more square footage.
Along that same line, that kind of, there's a few questions I have with our growth. Some areas that haven't maybe been mentioned, but maybe we have a plan for. The library, right now, seems really small for what we have, and, and maybe that's not necessary because of where technology is going. I just wasn't sure how much that space is used and the need for growth to accommodate more students. And then my second question is office space, is there enough office space to accommodate the need from potentially more counselors or more administrative people to manage the number of students that is.
So one of the things we've been talking about, if you see in that back hallway, if you could talk where those, where the SE is, Tom, on those two small rooms. Right where, right where your finger, don't come down, where it says special ed.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Right, yeah, right there, right there, those two smaller rooms. We've talked about making those offices, but you know, so flip them in front of the science classrooms. And there's two of those on each floor, so you get four offices there. Our current special education area, there's a number of small offices there. If you go back to the first floor, Andrea, there is some ways for us where you see the white section and where the old classrooms are right now, moving some of those into special ed. So we're trying to look at exactly what you're talking about, space. Going back to the library, I would anticipate us doing something with the library when we do the auditorium. And the reason being is because the high school has, or the library has the slanted roof. We would take that roof off at that time, so that large lobby area going into the auditorium and the roof for the library would give us a nice, again, flow all the way from the auditorium through the whole front of the, front of the school. Again, when you look at, I mean, your next question is financing. You know, this is probably gonna be around a thirty-two million, thirty-three million dollar project. We'll have to wait and see once we get closer into the, they can break it down a little bit further. Mike is working on trying to figure out, I mean, we know what our available dollars are now that we can borrow. And that's roughly fifty-three million around there, Mike?
Uh, yeah, about three point, well, these numbers were from February when we worked with Matt Gillespie with Piper Sandler at that time. So we would need him to update it, but at that time, we could borrow about three point one million from PEPAL and about fifty million or so save.
So this would really be one of our last major expansions, so we get, you know, with the twenty-twenty-eight, we re-go back for additional PEPAL?
Um, yeah, PEPAL currently expires at the end of the twenty-seven, twenty-eight fiscal year. So sometime prior to then, we would need to vote to extend PEPAL, which would give us additional borrowing capacity for PEP from PEPAL.
Again, we're hitting that twenty-nine, thirty range for our next additions probably. So.
I don't think I followed your answer to Catherine's question about the library. Just because you changed roof doesn't change the square footage, so what am I missing?
We can do one of two things. If we don't need the square footage, just put the roof on. If we need square footage, what's very nice is that, you have that large green space out in front. We could extend that out then, so we're putting the new roof on, just like we're doing to the cafeteria, putting in the front on. We could do the same thing with the library at that time.
Okay, we're not cooked into the auditorium pressure, not, not shaded.
That is correct. Yes. Really, the library, the biggest space reasons is just staff faculty meetings. That's where they tend to do those right now. If we didn't do it there, it'd probably go to the theater. So I'd have tables in the library.
I just wanted to reaffirm Director Kunkel's comment about the counseling. We designed the current in-office support system. There is a sixth guidance counseling office right there, ready to go. That's ready to bring on, not a problem. We didn't plan on any more beyond that, because at the time, the big push was for the towers, and that was gonna be a whole new thing, and there was gonna be more admin offices and counselor offices and stuff over there. So the point is well taken, it's gonna have to be thought through. It, it can work, because at twenty-six hundred kids, you're gonna need seven counselors, you're gonna be pushing an eighth, because you try and say three fifty, three twenty-five, somewhere around there per counselor, that's kind of where you're at, so. It's, it's doable, just gotta think through it.
Other questions?
So the, the amount of money that we want to borrow that you talked about, Mike, that is, so that's, that's the money that could help fund this, because we've already taken care of the funding for the Forest Grove and, and junior high expansion.
Correct.
We're not having to borrow for any other, like, five-year construction projects?
Not, not at this time, not yet.
That's kind of what we did when we did the initial expansion. Where we borrowed against.
Future saves, right.
Exactly.
And PEPAL.
PEPAL, right. But so by the time this happens, we will already pay, we would have already, that's, those have been, those obligations were they've been taken care of in the first expansion.
Not completely, we still owe some from those expansions.
But they would still let us extend it over.
Right.
Okay.
The only other borrow right now that is on our radar would be the elementary playgrounds, which is about a two and a half million dollar. If we're gonna fund those, that's two and a half million dollars more we'd have to borrow. To fund, I mean, it's not completely borrowing all that, but it's a two and a half million dollar project. Maybe borrowing a million and a half to make it happen or so, or a million to make it happen.
What about any future land purchase?
Um, we've got that already in our calculations. That's in our five-year plan. Yes. The only thing they ask is, I'm trying to kill them.
So, yeah, because I calculated that with this expansion, it'll be six twenty-five, six twenty-five kids per class approximately at the high school. So we'll be able to accommodate.
Yes.
Any other questions at all? If not, there's no required motion on this, but it is just sort of an FYI. So it looks like we'll be seeing you a lot, Tom, in the future.
But not tomorrow night.
Thank you very much.
You bet.
Thank you.
Yo.
Thanks, Leanne.
Good thing.
Um, finally, um, we, um, have to have our certified budget amendment presentation by, uh, Mr. Vindman, and we'll have to approve that.
All right, yeah, um, you recall at last board meeting, we approved the certified budget for the upcoming twenty-three, twenty-four fiscal year. This is a normal procedure tonight that we normally do about this time every year, usually right after the board meeting, where we approve the certified budget for the upcoming year, we amend the current year's budget. The, the main reasons for amending the budget are, um, when we do the certified budget, um, the year, you know, again, it's, it's a budget, you don't know exactly what you're gonna bring in, so there's miscellaneous types of income. For example, if you get grants that you didn't expect and things like that, that come in during the year, um, that gives you more money than you may have expected to have, um, that's one of the reasons for amending the budget. Um, in your board packet, you have the normal documentation that I present each year for amending the budget. In Iowa, there's four different functional areas for your certified budget. They are the instructional area, the total support services area, the non-instructional programs area, and then what's called total other expenditures, which is mainly capital expenditures related to building additions and things like that. By Iowa law, you're not allowed to overspend in any of those functional areas, or in total, of course. So, that's the other reason for amending of the budget, is to make sure that we do not go over in any of those functional areas of certified budget. I have a spreadsheet that I keep track of each month on where we sit compared to what our certified budget is for the year, to make sure that we don't go over budget in any of those functional areas. But again, this procedure is just to give us extra wiggle room to make sure that we don't go over budget in any of those functional areas. So on the third page in, on the, um, documentation that was in the board packet, this amended budget would increase our, our budget for the year by a little bit over thirty-seven million dollars. Our current budget for the year was just over eighty million dollars. This would increase our budgeted expenditures for the year in total to a hundred and seventeen million dollars. That does not mean we're gonna spend thirty-seven million dollars more than what we budgeted for the year. Again, this is just to give us that wiggle room, and this is the normal process that we do each year, is to spend that miscellaneous, or to budget for spending that miscellaneous income that we didn't expect to receive. And we, we always budget, when we amend the budget, for spending down our fund balances to zero, which we would not do. But again, that gives us the maximum wiggle room, so that we don't have to worry about, um, overspending on any of these functional areas of our certified budget. If I take any questions, if anybody has any questions on it, otherwise, we just need to have a public hearing and then make a motion to amend the current year's budget.
Questions? And the most important thing to remember is that even though it's four hundred and seventeen million, as Mr. Vindman has mentioned, we're gonna spend that hundred and seventeen million dollars. Not, then I will open this up for a public hearing. So, I'm opening for a public hearing, everybody in our audience right now, so I doubt that there's going to be anybody who's going to. Questions, so I'm closing the. And I will take my.
I move that the board amend the twenty-twenty-two budget as was adopted on April eleventh, twenty-twenty-two, by changing estimates of expenditures as presented in the notice of public hearing for amendment of current budget for twenty-twenty-two, twenty-three.
Motion of Ms. Kunkel, second motion, camera show, that the board amend the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three budget as was adopted on April twen- eleventh, twenty-twenty-two, by changing estimates of expenditures as presented in the notice of public hearing for amendment of current budget for twenty-twenty-two, twenty-three. Will, will please do this, Damon?
Mr. Ears.
Yes.
Mrs. Brockman.
Yes.
Mrs. Hoskins.
Yes.
Director Kencher.
Yes.
Mrs. Kunkel.
Yes.
Ms. Vera.
Yes.
Director Lloyd.
Yes. Okay, um, that is the last of our, um, agenda items. So our next meeting is going to be Monday, May twenty-second, second, at six P M. And then we have another one on June twelfth, uh, at six P M as well. We do have, um, graduation, um, Memorial Weekend, that's Sunday, and it's at three-thirty. For those people who are gonna be in front of that, court members, um, just remember to, um, show up. What time, please, around maybe three o'clock, is that right?
Yeah.
Is it us two? Okay, okay, um, so, then I'll see you then. Tom, are there any other questions or anything for the go-to-the-order of this meeting?